I think it's time. Oh, we're late. Good evening, everybody. I am gonna call our board of trustees, monthly meeting order is October 1st, 5:03. Welcome. Good to see everybody this evening. We'll start with citizen comments. Comment on the front end. Good, good. Then we'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting, of course. Awesome announcement. Have any real announcement? We had a great meeting today as we also helped care council. David and I had a conversation with members of the healthcare council on mental health in the community and mental health issues facing the country. Just a nice conversation. Thanks to Anne for putting together our materials. I think it went very well. Lots of good questions, lots of engagement, even offers or interests in exploring other opportunities to work together in the community from other healthcare organizations. Do you have any other insights about that presentation?
This evening, the last week, mental health has been at the top of the surgeon general's report. Report on workplace, you know, the five things that combined to provide culture begins with safety, a sense of security. There was there's been announcements on the Mental Health Association of America, United States and mental health. So I won't go on, but even in October, there has been, if we would have just put up how many times mental health is a topic agenda. There's a piece of volume and interest that the the council had. And so I appreciate the fact that we really left time for the discussion, engagement. And again, Anne's preparations were stellar.
I agree. Thank you, Anne. That's all that I have. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the agenda that someone would like to remove or more robust discussion? I'll note that we've got a lot of items here to make up or we do not have. And
I know a lot of policy items that we passed and
Well, then I know they're in good shape. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I can, all favors say aye. Any opposed? The items are approved. Next action items discussed, take appropriate action on financial statements and budget amendments if applicable for the period ending September 30th. On 22.
And not real exciting. Of course, September is only the first month of the fiscal year. So with the budget amendments of just over a million dollars that occurred in September, our budget has officially exceeded $150 million for the fiscal year. The budget amendments that are included in this proposal include the city of Austin for tenant based permanent support of housing at 562,000. Travis County asserted its community treatment in additional 204,000. City of Austin made a road reservation renovations and additional 100,000. And the rest of the amendments are under the 100,000 threshold individually. As you'll see, operations, what's showing in the general ledger showed a deficit of 1.1 million dollars. However, that is prior to recording the accrual on the public health provider charity care pool, which we're working on those cost reports now. Based on our initial estimate of 21 million, that'd be 1.75 million, which would put us in the black at this point of 560,000. As we look forward, our total fund balance is just over $35 million. Of that, almost $24 million is unrestricted uncommitted fund balance, which is a six phase operation. We happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whedon. Trish, any other comment?
No, it's just that, you know, we didn't at the board level, but we have
In the final for last month will be in January.
And so audit rights, we will, you'll see the final of that. If you're interested, you're in there, but it will be presented once you answer on it again.
Any questions for David? If not, all entertain a motion to approve. Second. Any further discussion? If not, all favors say aye. Any opposed? The action is approved. Thanks, David. Onto the CEO report, Mr. Evans.
Well, the first item is something that we've worked a long time on, something we've discussed with board and staff. And that's the United Workers of Interval Care, the formation of a union. You may recall that at card count, there was some 13% of our employees that joined. And so we agreed to a first meeting date in the second September, our second week in September. So on September the 13th, we got our first meeting, our co-presidents, Megan Moriarty and Curly Belikin attended, Andrea Goldstein and Olivia Stroud. So again, the consultation policy spells out representation, frequency, how agendas will be formed. And so unfolding this meeting, which we're calling the Interval Care Consultation Committee. And then consistently, I've been inviting Dawn Hanley and David Wheaton to meet together with them. I think it was really important that we take the kind of time and had an opportunity for the union also to look at the consultation policy because we found that, you know, it's a short four pages. It's been a good guide that we've referenced back several times and as our conversations may have been wider, they kind of put us back, I think, into some good work. I'm going to mention here what the first months and the second months agenda was. So the submitted on times, five days ahead of time. And we're going to keep a regular kind of take a regular meeting time on the second Tuesday afternoon of each month. And I really want to compliment the employees came in as union members, union representatives. Just exactly, in my opinion, the way that we discussed this being collaborative, identifying areas that while they may be specific, we're looking at fixes that are strengthening the structure of the organization. And then also, I think there'll be topics that will be moved forward a couple of months because they're brought up, we discuss them, but we also we'll have to bring back reports and that kind of thing. There's no recommendations this evening to the board that's come out of specifically saying, let's change a policy. Let's, let's have board action on an amount of money as an example. But I'll just hit the head, the headline is that the very first item that the union wanted to discuss, I won't go a little more detail. Maybe as we're a little bit more used to this, I'll be guided a little bit by how much you want to know. But I do think that again, it's important enough that we just take a few minutes and have this discussion. So the first item was how can the union with new employee orientation, you know, bringing in our folks for the first time, providing that orientation? How can the union right at the beginning of employment engage employees and be able to communicate? And so again, using the guidance of our consultation policy, this item went forward into this second meeting also. But we really talked about providing an email list of those employees that are undergoing the orientation. Allows the union to make any kind of contact and then following the formal time, maybe at lunchtime or right after the orientation to be able to identify a meeting room or choose to engage and introduce themselves. So my opinion, it was a very constructive discussion. It made sense, understood what their interests were. And then again, adhere to the policy and finding a solution. We also met regarding job descriptions and pay scales. This is all part of the of the compensation study that had been done. Still a little bit of confusion as to how all that was going to fly. And I think that HR hadn't finished all of the work in our September meeting. This issue came back. Another issue that came up was the sense of administrative coverage and insufficient security at the Runberg. Runberg's an interesting layout because we have both an adult and it's almost like a strip mall, but we have an adult offices and exam rooms and we have child and family. So we had a security guard to go back and forth. And we also had looking at replacing an administrative staff person at our desk in terms of welcoming and overseeing the waiting room there. And really listened to what were some of the concerns around security. You'll see in the second meeting, some follow up that I think was well received and going through, going through that resolution. So also, I'm talking about this a little bit more of an issue around pest control. And the, I think on the same day that the statesman hearing a story on small mammals. In terms of in the wall, you know, order making that just an unpleasant but an untenable force environment. As much as we didn't want to hear that circumstance, I think this is part of the value. And while we have policies and procedures and lines of communication, we need to hear the concern around that issue. And so we were asked if we would prepare a list back on the security issue of all of our facilities and the contract we have with the security company and what kind of security that we have. And again, this is a little bit more of a systemic look. And we said we would also take a look at the one coverage of the one individual at one location. So that leads us right into the second month's meeting. We weren't able to bring this because we have a September board meeting. So this is two months reporting. We did then have a second meeting on October 11. So again, I'm reporting every item. I'm taking a little bit of extra time tonight because I think that it's important when we get off on the right foot and continue to work in a collaborative way that I believe that's going to be established to date. And so in terms of updates on the job description, we were able to invite our HR director, Rodney Glenn. He also was able to talk about you know, the updating of the positions, the finalizing cleanup, class comp rollout, in addition to the overall job descriptions. The HR will be updating agency-wide. I thought you can represent and said really good suggestions about the job description because sometimes they need to be too generic, too specific. So when folks are applying for jobs here, to really be able to utilize input on how we can match up community interest in jobs across a variety of opening and submitting. We then updated on the security and we did hire a second security. We felt that security, a sense of safety is an important issue. And so we worked with the, with the company. And again, there's not a situation where staff may look outside, either can't see the security person because they have gone to the other program or up to the park. And somehow we have dedicated individual. Also, we did the follow up on the contacts, on the the presence of N E O. Some questions that came up, I think we reached closure on that issue. I don't think that's going to come back up unless there's a problem moving into the future. This is just an anecdotal insight, but I think that so many areas that we have policies and procedures and from top down, we have really clear communication. We're pretty, we have a management team in, we have a quality leadership team. We have data. We feel pretty confident in what's happening in the organization. At the same time, there are insights on the ground, frontline, you know, from our staff that are being represented through the union. And I think as long as we're looking at resolutions and feedback systemically, that trail off in one specific circumstance goes in operations, but comes back into strengthening the organization. I think we're on the, I think we're on the right track. Also, we talked about continuing reporting on facility. Another really good example. We may have a work order that's been posted. We may have a repair operation coming out. We may have old abatement or one room in a clinic. But that doesn't mean that the staff necessarily know the progress and what's happening with that. With that, or even going to the supervisor may not paint a current picture of the attended, are attending to facility repair and that environment. It's not just environmental safety, but it's an environment that promotes good clinical interactions and quality. So in that regard, we're rolling out a new software system. We've had somewhat an antiquated work order system. It may have worked well for inside of maintenance, but it couldn't work as well in the, you know, the horizontal or any cross cutting information and updates. And so we're moving a system called Maintenance, Maintain X. And we're going to then allow employees to have access. They look for work orders, look at the status, look at the time date. If something has been delayed because of supply chains, you know, you can post it on the employees of working in the in the area will have access to that or correct information. So that's the formal meeting notes. We shared the meeting notes back with the union. I asked, have there any corrections or can we catch it right? And today I think we have, and I'll take any questions, but that's our off and running in terms of doing some important work with what's called the Interval Care Consultation Committee. I'll put a footnote on it. And the footnote is that there was a belief that one person should chair the committee. Interesting. I hadn't necessarily anticipated who's going to chair this committee. And the union reps made a suggestion to get this right. I don't know what the software is, but it's flip a coin, but it's a flip a coin online. So we couldn't see it. We had to have deep trust. All I know is that when the coin came up, it said, David Evans. So at any rate, I've agreed for this first year. And then what we also redo is that because of the nature of the collaboration, the consultation committee that it will then be the union to get their And I did offer to resign about that. We'll do the second meeting.
Or report any question for David?
Okay. Yes, Reverend Callahan, if you'll help me. Remember, we have quarterly Texas council meetings. On Thursdays, I bring in the 39 directors of the local authorities across the state. Friday morning, they offer an opportunity for legislative updating work and Saturday effects of council meeting and Reverend Callahan, I want to thank you for your faithfulness and engaging Texas council and then in your emails or within the board to updates that are coming out of this important work with council.
My pleasure to represent the board. To shine a light long to the all of the board members around the state, 39 centers. We've all had received text messages, not pictures, but emails from me concerning everything I get from Texas council. Rather than trying to keep that information to myself and trying to share it with all of you. This document, hopefully, you've taken it, you're going to read it. We should send out things that every board member should know. It's a very important document and I encourage you to read it. We met on Saturday in Ramon. And I liked that medium was that Lee Johnson, the new CEO of the organization put out a new organizational chart, which is attached to the report. And you'll see those personalities and they are I include in one of our own. Mr. David Whedon.
What?
We're excited about Also attached is in a draft copy of the Texas council legislative priority for A D E legislative session. There are five major areas of focus. Maintain essential community and mental health services, mental health programs for children and abuse. Continue shows this to address the fundamental justice, mental health interface, access to inpatient care and I D E. There are two policy focuses, recommendation for power use and I D E services. I was planning for the conference in 2023 in Houston, Texas, at the Galleria. And there was a call for keynote speakers and in calls. I think process they have for selecting keynote speaker. So if you know of any one that you want to recommend. Also, if you have any persons in mind for the Frank M. Adams Award, individual community media organizational board member. Share that information as well. The next council meeting will be January 21st, 23. Hopefully I'll be able to make that. That's my report.
Questions or problems?
I'm very happy to send you the I D E. And some other areas.
I was in one major area in the second one.
Thank you very much. Looking ahead.
Yeah, if I just have mentioned two things quickly. One is that ahead of this 88 legislative session, we're going to co-host with the state nominee. And also with Texas council staff, the legislative and calling the summit in the past, we've held legislative updates. Texas council has listed things statewide that they're going to offer the way of improvements through the upcoming legislature. We want to hear that. We want to hear from the families. And then we'll, we'll start our list here, things to talk to our own delegation about in harmony with the rest of the state. We don't have a date for this yet. We have agreement with the partners, but sometime in that first couple of weeks of December. So as soon as we know that we don't have that November meeting, we have that combined November, December, is that the 10th? The 8th, yeah, I've memorized it. It's on the 8. And probably sometime in the same vicinity of that. So I think that's important. The other thing is that we didn't give a report, we're setting up on the agenda, but just what's ahead in the way of the next step from our employee advisory council. This is going really well and being established. You know, full, robust representation. And they've requested that they could be given a little bit of an opportunity to organize themselves, organize with a consultant. So Anne has really picked that up, you know, regrettably, and lost Georgia Mungo, as you know. And he was also a big part of that. But Anne, thank you for, you know, having a lift and getting this employee advisory council off the ground and we'll give that just a little more time to self over there. I think it looks like it works and we have to go.
Okay, now on to citizens' comments.
I'm Andrea Goldstein. I can just move beyond. Hi, Andrea Goldstein. I am a member of the United Workers of Interval Care. And I wanted to thank David Evans for highlighting the work that we're doing at the ICCC, which stands again for the Interval Care Consultation Committee. So we've done, we had a couple of good meetings and I think it was collaborative. It's been productive. And we are building on, you know, each meeting to make sure that we're not just talking about stuff, but that we are step by step making the changes that we all agree on. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
No? All right, on to new business. The first action items, we are selecting offer groups for this coming year as we do every year. And this will be Ann is our head of nominations in the election process. Thank you. Well, before you do, before you do, so we've had nominations submitted and everybody on the ballot has press an interesting running. And I know we have a few spots that have multiple people. And I know that Trish has been nominated to be chair. I have been chair for like nine years and it's been an absolute privilege and pleasure. I mean, I'm, but I am excited that someone like Trish has been nominated. I, I think everybody knows that Trish and I go way back when she was hired as the CEO of Community Care. And I was that was a baby. And I was also really excited when she agreed with such an asset with the experience and expertise and with this temperament, judgment. So I think it would be an amazing hands for her to take this over. I've been in this job, like I said, a long time. It's it's longer, I think, than a chair should be in this role. And because we've got such a great candidate nominated, I'm going to pull myself off.
Well, then that would mean that Trish was being the chair.
And she, you are interested in willing to consider the background check is cleared and
is in the corner.
All those, all those photos were photoshopped. We can turn that. So yeah. So there you have it.
I will say, all board members, and say there's a stretch and they're like
Yeah, most in second, yeah.
Okay.
And so, yeah, go through that process and then I'm going to, after this is done, I'm going to hand the gavel to her and then she'll finish it out for the Well, what's Finish it out? All right, all right. All right. So we'll wait. Damn, I mean, okay.
You said you have a song. I'm going to fill her some.
All right, we have to wait for that. So you have adulation. Shall we, oh, you'll do that right now? Yes, please do.
While you're doing that, we have an announcement. If you can help me out, I know we have a new chief medical officer. Stabilization is happening, maybe to be known for in my report.
So we have a new medical director for our program operation side of the house, Dr. Ziad Nueyake. So we have a new uh, medical director for our program operation side of the house, uh, Dr. Ziad Nguyen. You've come up. And introduce yourself to the board. He's fantastic. He has been providing services in the jail. So I have that here.
He brings um, a wealth of knowledge, uh, you know, to our organization, obviously, but being um, a forensic psychiatrist, this is really kind of at the heart. Work that we're doing. I give you your chip and I'll set aside and I can say to you.
Hello, Ziad Nguyen, I'm new chief medical officer, as Dawn said. I've been with the center for about four and a half years now. First with uh, Humley Center and for the past couple of years in jail. And for this will last six months, associate medical director for prices, S U V. Presidential and justice programs. Uh, and I'm happy to be on board and continue the work we've been doing.
Have the results? Thank you, Rick. Can I read the results? Okay, uh, so our incoming chair will be Trish and our incoming vice chair will be Emmett and our incoming secretary treasurer will be Deborah. Very exciting. Thank you, thank you. All right, now we are on to our proposed dates for November, December board meeting. That's December eighth. Is that right? Do we need people to check their calendars now? It's to make sure we'll have a forum based on this thing, information or?
Sure, why not? On my calendar.
Okay, good. Um, so now we're going to go into closed session and I have some special bourbon.